All right, we will call the Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole of October 10, 2022 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Burerton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present?
Okay, thank you. And our agenda, as it's laid out, I would like to make a change in the order. I would like to move up under 5D, the discussion regarding street legal UTVs and golf carts, and I would like to move that up. Essentially, we could move that after the Building Department update, which would be 2A. We'll put it on after that, please. I know there are some people, we have six individuals that have registered this evening for public comment, and I believe it's all about that. So if we can accommodate them, if there's no objection, unless somebody's objected, has an objection to that, then we'll do that. Thank you. So, under public comment this evening, we have with us first Kathy Sell. Hi Kathy. So, how we do this here is if you would please come up to the podium and right up here at the microphone and...
I don't have anything to say.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. I had you, I had you down here as registered. So, next I have Jim McCann Jr. Is Jim with us? Jim, would you mind, you want to come up here this evening? Just state your name, please.
I'm addressing the ATVs being allowed on the street. My personal opinion is I'm against it. The reason being, they, I came from Chicago out here. I've been out here for seven and a half years. And in Chicago, they just took over the streets. And I'm not saying that's what's going to happen here. I'm just telling you my own experience. And if they had something against you, you yelled at them or something when they went by you, two or three of them just surrounded your car. Now, that's not a very comfortable position to be in, even if it's only 15-year-old kids. What do you do? You can't step on the gas, you're going to hit one of them. To me, it's a lot like drinking age. You have to be 21 to drink. Well, everybody knows, there's all kinds of people under 21. Just go to any college town that are filling bars. I think it's going to be the same thing with this. You're going to see young kids that are on these, that are going to get hurt, potentially get hurt. My ex-wife worked at Shriners Hospital, and she said, "It just mystifies me why people would even own one of these things." She said, "Almost weekly, we see a young child come in, some of them wind up paralyzed, but others that have been hurt bad on these things." Not necessarily from recklessness, just that they fell off of them. So, my position is, it's not a situation the police department deals with now, nor do they need to deal with it. I don't see what's the reason for having them on the street. You can get wherever you're going in a, in an automobile. You don't have to be on an ATV. They're, in my view, they're for off-road, not for on-road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. And next, we have Rory Peterson. Hey Rory, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Rory Peterson. I'd like to register opposition. And mainly, I look at government as being a vehicle to best protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And I think at this time, I can't see an ATV operation being a part of the government operation, especially not at the city level. I mean, you might find that the Conservation District or Park District might have some way to work with you. But, excuse me, in, in general, I think it's, it wouldn't be long, and the nature of it is going to be that it's going to pit neighbor against neighbor, because not everybody is going to have a buy-in to this. And I think as time goes by, you're going to find that the people that thought they had a quiet neighborhood now have loud pipes trespassing and rubber peeling, people cutting across the lawns, and probably evading the police officers that are going to be charged with enforcing it. So, in, in general, I think the corollary from good neighbors are made by good fences. The corollary is quiet neighbors make really good neighbors. And I leave it to your discretion, but I'm vehemently opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And we have Fred Burton here with these, here this evening. Fred, welcome.
Fred Burton, 315 Allen Street, and I'm here to oppose this issue as well, as a public safety issue. About 25 years ago, I was diagnosed with macular degeneration. And I was able to function pretty well for a number of years, but recently, it has continued to deteriorate to the point where I'm no longer able to drive a car. You would think, well, this would be a great alternative to driving a car, but I agree with the gentleman that was talking about public safety. So I'm doing a lot more walking now than I ever did before. And as I experienced walking, just simply crossing the street can sometimes be a challenge to see a car or a truck coming down the street. I can only imagine if we have golf carts or other types of vehicles that might be coming down the street are hard to see and hard to hear. At least with a car, you can hear the wheels, the rubber on the road, and fortunately, up to this point, gasoline engines. But as, as you add more vehicles and pedestrians are challenged, I'm not here just to advocate for myself. I know there are a lot of people in our community that are challenged with eyesight, and I know Alderman Snow certainly can appreciate that. And the previous councils have tried to accommodate with crosswalks that have sound in order to tell when it's safe to walk. So I would ask you to dig a little bit deeper in this issue than simply accommodating somebody that wants to have some fun on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. And we have Jereen Stevens. Jereen? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jereen Stevens. I'm very much opposed to these ATVs and golf carts. I do own one of each, but I use them at my business to plow snow and kill weeds. And they call them off-road vehicles for some reason, don't they? They do not need to be on the public highway. I have seen them do wheelies in Rockford, cut in front of people, and I don't think we need it in Belvidere. We've got enough problems the way it is. We only have so much room on the road the way it is. I'm getting older, and I can't see things like I used to. And if I ran into one of them, I wouldn't feel good about it. But their mama would be really mad at me. So I guess that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you.
And we have Deanna Veale. Hi, Deanna, welcome. Welcome.
Good evening. I raised my older kids in Winnebago on a farm, and we had four-wheelers, UTVs, dirt bikes, the whole thing. But the thing is, they need to be out where they can run. They're loud, they're very annoying. We don't need them racing down the streets. I had to call the police several times over the summer for people riding four-wheelers. And I think that this would be opening a huge Pandora's Box to just anybody riding anything they want down the street. Kids that are way too young to be doing it, the best of best of Rockford coming in, who knows what, because they had a shooting, they never found the guy. You know, you wear a helmet and an outfit and the whole thing, you're never going to find out who shot at somebody. And I really don't think that we need it here. It's very unsafe, it's loud, and whoever said the quiet neighborhoods, that would be the end of that. I firmly believe that, because I've already had to deal with it. You know, I have a guy across the street that just goes out and revs his dirt bike for 20 minutes every day. And, you know, quiet neighborhood, older folks, nobody wants to hear that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Veale. All right, that's all we have this evening. Oh, yeah, come on, come on up.
Can I speak?
Sure. We're not going to deprive anybody.
Hi, I'm Terry Chilson, West Locust Street. I own two four-wheelers. And I have a subdivision in Wisconsin up by Castle Rock Lake, where it is outlawed, no four-wheelers on the street. And if you look around the subdivision, there is no sidewalks. And I think the liability alone, probably have to hire a couple more policemen, you know, because of the added liabilities. I think it'd just be a real bad idea, and I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, this will come up here in just a few minutes. That will come up, we've moved it up. But before we get there, we have on the agenda, item one, building, planning, zoning unfinished business. We have none. Item two, building, planning, zoning new business. Building Department update, Kip Countryman?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of September, excuse me, we issued 107 permits for a value of construction just under $9 million. Fifteen of those were commercial, 92 residential, one single-family home, some commercial projects of note. Starbucks is doing a tenant build-out, Walmart, General Mills, Speed Truck, and I guess it's Duck Hatch, not The Catch, but it's a chicken and fish place just next to the doughnut shop for property maintenance. We closed 23 cases. We have 12 open and seven currently ticketed. And I'll entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Countryman? Alderman Snow?
Just as a note, obviously, maybe your people are checking or seeing, but there's an awful lot of signage, both political and businesses, that like do the roofing and siding and stuff in the terrorist area. Are we proactively gathering those up or warning?
Uh, yeah. Currently, last week, I believe we did three sweeps of the town with the political signs. We've contacted the incumbents that are running. So we are actively keeping an eye on that stuff.
I will say that we had complaints regarding the signs in the right of way. And as we all know, that a lot of times, those are left behind, and then it's just really trash, and it is in the street, in your yard, what have you. Also, we have an ordinance that has, that specifically states as to the size of the signs that we have. And everybody plays by the same rules. I have had election, all of you have had elections. I know that you guys play by the rules, and so doesn't everybody else, unless we want to change the ordinance. And nobody has an appetite for that, I don't think. I think it works well, as long as everybody abides by the rules. But nobody's better than anybody else, and there's nobody that's exempt. So with, we have, like I said, had complaints regarding that. We treat everybody fairly and equally. And we pick them up, pick them up nondiscriminately, I think Kip, Kip would say. So, a little bit, just an update on that, so.
Yeah, we gave them due notice and gave them time to remove the signs. And then if they complied, they complied. If they didn't, we, we removed them, so.
All right, anything else, Kip? No?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we move then the street legal UTVs and golf carts up. And for all of you, as a reminder, on June 13th, we had had a request by two individuals that came to the City Council, and they had asked the city to legalize UTVs and golf carts on the streets. There was some discussion about it. I had made it clear how I felt about it. I, I had talked to that individual and prior to him coming to the meeting, prior to them coming to the meeting. And my major question was, why? And why is that a good idea for public safety in the community? Why is that a good idea for the police department regarding enforcement? Why is that a good idea for the neighbors who have to try and contend with adding these on the streets? And essentially, why is it a good idea? And I was told then that because I may want to take my family up to the Dairy Ripple. And my, my point was, well, why can't you go in your vehicle? Why can't you go in your car or your truck? And I think that's a valid point. I, I do believe that we've seen Rockford recently with not only ATVs, but UTVs, off-road vehicles. We've seen them deal with some of the problems that they have over there. And one of my concerns was, as mayor, that if, they have, they have outlawed them, they've made them so they can't ride them in the city of Rockford. There's a reason for that. And I think one of the individuals that came up and talked pointed that out, and it's been in the news. I don't believe that, you know, I, I believe that we would have an enforcement issue. I think we have a regulation issue. And I still go back to the question, why? Why would we want to do this? And not to mention some of the issues that I'd touched on before, that being noise. One of the things that was brought up was that we have loud motorcycles, we have loud cars, and that it might be better. Well, I don't, I don't know how that makes it better, but I don't think so. I think it adds to the dilemma that a quality of life suffers in this community. I've always felt that way. But with that being said, I also had made a promise that I would reintroduce this to the council, to the committee. And so that's where we're at. You know, I think, I think when you see other communities that have, have done this, I think there's a question of whether or not they think it was a good idea now. I think that also has been shared. And then if we're the community that allows UTVs or off-road vehicles in our community, those surrounding communities that have made it choice not to do that, guess where they're going to be here? Guess where they're going to be riding? Guess where they're going to come? They're going to come here. And then the police have, have to answer, and myself, and each one of you, have to answer all the questions about who did this, and how do we get this under control? And we've seen in Rockford, where individuals have taken off cross-country, and they haven't been able to catch them, even after a shooting. And I just don't see it's conducive to having a good quality of life here. And I still have yet to hear anybody answer the question of why that's a great idea. I've lived here in this community for 54 years. We have done without them. I'm not saying that everybody is, who would ride these is not, would not be law-abiding. I'm sure the people that introduced this to the council have good intentions. But with that, there comes a certain amount of individual, as everybody knows, that they don't follow the rules. And when they don't follow the rules, then we have to try and pick up the pieces and try and enforce those rules. And it makes it very, very difficult, very difficult. I know the police don't have, at least I don't believe they do, any UTVs. And some of that pursuit that would go through the rear lot lines or cross-country or whatever, it would be impossible to catch, to catch or apprehend them. And don't, you know, don't fool yourself. I think that, you know, there are certain individuals that would relish the idea to be able to ride these on the streets of our community. And many communities have already realized that that's a big mistake. So with that being said, I would, you know, open this up. Alderman Porter had his hands up first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, excuse me, Alderman. If anybody wants to make a motion to the effect that, you know, they want to put this as a pro on this in the form of a motion, and a second to further the discussion on it, you can do so at any time. Otherwise, everybody that has their hands up, I will, we will hear them out. Alderman Porter, continue, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah, I just want to back up what the one lady said there, and I didn't quite catch her name. But I have personally, no less than three occasions, seen four-wheel ATVs and dirt bikes doing wheelies and riding in packs on State Street in Rockford, and just acting really reckless. So I'll back up what she said, that I have personally witnessed that. So they're trying to see how far they can ride wheelies down State Street.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Snow?
So, when the fellow came to the meeting before, I was fairly open-minded. And he had cited Johnsburg as part of his stuff. And I happened to work with the village president of Johnsburg, and I talked to him. And they have very few complaints, admittedly. But they're an extremely, extremely small community and a totally different dynamic. And my personal opinion is, I'm not a big advocate for this as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Stevens?
Don't we need to make a positive motion to get this going, so that we can either vote it up or down?
Or no action. You can simply not take action. It's on the, this is committee, so you're okay to just discuss things if you wish.
Okay. But if we vote it down, then would it be able to come back at any time, or?
Yeah, anybody can bring it back.
It could come back, Alderman Stevens. But if somebody wants to make a motion in a second, they would certainly put it on the record at the committee level for a vote.
Okay, and make a motion that we allow them?
Okay. Anybody want a second motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter? He had his hand up first. Any other discussion regarding the motion and second on the floor? You know, I have said this before, is that just because individuals come to the City Council, and they have, and there's nobody else, nobody else here, the, the public, the general public, a lot of times, they don't, they're not aware of what goes on here. And they rely on us to do the right thing. I do believe that, you know, as I had pointed out before, I actually have, had called the police and with individuals in UTVs that have been racing up and down Sixth Street, and also then down 14th Avenue. And I hadn't been able to catch up with them. But it just so happens, there were a couple incidences, instances when they did stop right up the street. And the police did show up, as I would hope they would. And, but the, the fact is, is that as a lady had said here, Ms. Veale had said, when she had spoken in the microphone, is that, you know, a lot of these have no mufflers on them, or they, they modify them, they take them off, and then they race up and down the streets. And I can vouch for that in my neighborhood. So I just think that we use common sense, and we, we rely on good common sense to represent the public. And that's what I hope we do here this evening, so. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So just wanted to just say too, if, so Ryan, when he came here and gave his presentation, I think he gave a very adequate presentation and kind of addressed some of the, some of the concerns. And, you know, he did a very good job of saying that it would be street legal and some other just considerations of some of the things that people are opposed to. So just want to reiterate that, you know, he was, did a very good job of trying to abide by the rules and make sure that it wouldn't be a detriment to the community. However, I hear the concerns tonight from people of why they don't think it's a good idea. And although there are probably some citizens that would act appropriately with this if it was passed, I think, you know, unfortunately, there are maybe some more bad apples out there that might cause more, more harm than good in this regard.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments before we take a vote? All right, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion on the, on the floor, please say aye. Any opposed? We can do a roll call. Sure. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Burerton?
No.
Flurry?
No.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Nay.
Mahal?
Nay.
Porter?
No.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
No.
No one in favor?
Okay. All right, motion failed. Thank you. And we also, then moving on, we have item B, Planning, Zoning Department Update. Gina?
Staff's been busy with just a wide variety of things. Obviously, site plans going on for the commercial permits that Kip mentioned. We have two cases for tomorrow's public hearing. They're both for indoor commercial entertainment. One is the old family video, and one is for the tenant space right next to Nico's. I do have... I do have a case already for next month for a microbrew. And I was anticipating two more applications, but I have not seen those yet. Zoning letters, the, both the Belvedere Retail subdivision and the Project Kelly subdivision have been officially recorded at the clerk's office in the county. So those are moving forward. And I was at an IDOT conference, and then I was at an all-day community action agency training. So that was just an abundance of information. Historic preservation is busy. They have their fundraiser this Saturday, so if anyone is looking for something to do Saturday, they're having a scavenger hunt. And then they're having the awards program next month as well. Oh, and there is a local daycare center that is applying for a very state grant to build a state-of-the-art facility, basically, so staff assisting with that as well.
Okay. And any questions for Ms. Delrose? Alderwoman Frank?
Hi Gina, can you tell me more about the gas, or the car wash that's not been going up yet? The one over on 76 in state?
Every time I ask for a status update, I am told it'll be a couple weeks. Every now and then, his engineer will call with questions, but then it's radio silenced again, so I am, I am not sure to be honest.
Thank you. We have item C on here, Gina, about the passenger rail. But item D, we have a special use extension for 825 North Appleton regarding the Conservation District solar farm. I know there's two individuals here, Dawn Fisher with the solar farm representing, and also Tina with the Conservation District, correct? So if we might take them a little bit out of order, I think that'd be a good idea. Do you mind? Okay. Anybody object? Okay. I'd hate, I'd hate to have you spend another hour, hour and a half here when we could help you out, so, yes. Gina?
So about three, four years ago, there was a special use granted for a solar farm on top of the closed landfill in Spencer Park. Landfill solar farms, they get along great with each other, because you can't really do anything with the landfill. So they were going to plant pollinators to help with bee, butterfly, hummingbird activity in the Conservation District area, so it was a good partnership. They've hit a couple speed bumps, one being the state lottery. Obviously, for a while, solar farms were dependent on that state lottery. The state lottery has been altered this year, specifically for solar farms of this nature, to try to give them an up in that lottery. Now they are coming, not coming to terms, but they're realizing that there's been some easements and some deed restrictions on that property because of the landfill. So as they're getting closer and closer to getting their state permit, they're uncovering some items that are now delaying the process again. So they will be asking for another extension. It is not uncommon for solar farms to get extensions, because again, they're, it's a very complicated kind of development that is very dependent on the state, so. And then that with the added easements and deed restrictions with the, with the landfill that they've come across, it's valid reasons for that extension.
Okay. So what you're asking for then is a motion for an extension here this evening?
Yep, a motion for a one-year extension.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any other discussion regarding that motion on the floor? Right, hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming here this evening. And we'll just go back here to item C, the passenger rail. So we did have a, a public presentation. And I wanted to make sure that, I know all the aldermen, there were three aldermen that were present, and all the aldermen weren't able to be there, or perhaps didn't know that it was, it was on our website. So here we are this evening, and I thought we would go ahead and put that on the big screen for those that weren't there. And if Gina could help me, actually, maybe I should, I could help you. So if you want to go over this, do you mind?
Can I have people?
You sure can. Come on up.
It was the thing that you're here that we have to say back.
Yes. Come on up. I'm really good at guessing, actually. I wait for the break and the short pause.
There's not necessary slides in America.
So the passenger rail was, R1, it actually, it was a service that they provided to the city regarding foreign associates who had done a, a little bit of historical, and also put together this presentation. And so just to preface that, here's what they had presented, and Ms. Delrose.
So for those that don't know, they're looking at having passenger rail extended all the way to Rockford. Belvedere would be the second-to-last stop, with Rockford being the last one. They do not know if it's Metro or Amtrak yet. Depending on which one it is, could greatly influence the platform and station design, which is why some of the stuff is still kind of vague. For those that don't know, there used to be a train depot on Main Street. So Main Street dead end, really kind of in front of City Hall. And then when that got pushed through, that is when, I believe, Caswell Street got blocked, so that there'd be less crossings. That's what the old depot looked like. Back in 2010, when we thought we were getting a grant for a train station, we had taken that grant money to design a new depot, heavily influenced by the design of the old depot. And this is one plan from 2005, this was part of the Floor Neighborhood Plan update, showing the train and how it would impact redevelopment downtown. And then that was revised again in 2010. So you can see, the city has a long history of seeing how the train would impact the downtown area in terms of redevelopment. Here's the design of the new train station. As you can see, it looks a lot like the old one. There'd be a little visitors bureau in there, maybe a kiosk, some amenities. Because I want to stress that this is not a commuter train, as of now. What they're proposing is it, is called an excursion train. So one train leaves in the morning, and it comes back at night. It's not a commuter train. It's the excursion, which is why it's better suited for downtown and not out west in the industrial areas where it's employment-based. If it's commuter, that would make sense. But this is more like weekend travelers. So this was just for foreign associates, kind of doing a survey of the stuff downtown. You can see it's heavily residential, but we do obviously have our commercial strip and some industrial and civic land uses. So we looked at several areas for the train station, primarily along Pleasant Street, going straight from State Street, kind of all the way down to Main Street, trying to figure out that right influx of platform versus station. Again, without knowing if it's Amtrak or Metro, that's kind of hard to determine. We did decide that the closer to State Street, the better. Visibility-wise, traffic-wise, it would just have the best impact and easiest access. So this is just kind of, so for train stuff, it's transit-oriented development. Usually, you can take people within a five mi, a five-minute walk, which is a quarter of a mile to a half mile, depending on how fast you're walking. That's really who you're grabbing for, as far as the commercial aspects that are going to tie in with the train. So this was just kind of showing modes of transportation based on the population's closeness to the proposed train station. They were just kind of surveying the area, seeing what could be done to improve traffic flow. Should Whitney be shut down? Should it not be shut down? One-way traffic? We were of the opinion, don't mess with the traffic flow. Don't change to one-way. Don't shut, you know, shut down streets if not necessary. We can make it work. Pleasant Street will be shut down. It's a one-way street, that's very few people go on it anyway. But as far as our major streets, we did not want them impacted. So this was just looking at the different bike paths to show, this kind of helps their ridership survey, to show how many people could be riding their bikes to get on the And this was some of the benefits. Obviously, the more people that live by the train, the more people that are going to ride the train. So they have suggested to redevelop one possible with multifamily housing, to add those ridership So again, this is kind of going, the kind of amenities you want with the train stop, ticket booth, bathrooms, tourist kiosk, all stuff that our train station that we did in 2010 already have. So we kind of, our original plans already met the needs that they wanted us to do. And this goes through the differences between Metro and Amtrak, as far as the length of the ADA requirements, items like that. So again, far, originally looked at quite a few different locations, and we kept stressing downtown, downtown, downtown. We want this to benefit the downtown, and we want this to benefit the community as much as possible, especially with the schedule that they were proposing. This just kind of shows one of the station locations. Again, we, we have requested it get closer to State Street. So the platform would actually go from State Street to Caswell, and not past Caswell. As long as the train stops about 74 feet in front of State Street, the crossing guards will not drop on State Street. So as long as it stops within 74 feet or farther back, it won't shut down State Street for vehicle traffic while it's loading and unloading. So that was key. But we would like it closer, you know, closer to the museum, closer to Ha Plaza, where you already have a nice outdoor courtyard for people to enjoy. So that was another proposal. The two biggest areas in town that will be impacted by the train is downtown and the leaf building, or leaf property. Obviously, it's river, it's vacant riverfront. You know, it's, it's always primed for redevelopment. And then our downtown area. So this is just kind of looking, so when you get off the train, this is what you're going to see. The nice courtyard, some buildings, some of which have been, you know, rehabbed, others that are needing rehab.
Can you go back there?
I don't know how to backspace.
Okay. Hmm. What did I go? Mike?
That's why you shut, quit being in charge of IT.
That's all right. Yeah, go, can you go back one slide, please?
I don't know. Back a slide.
Yeah.
Backspace?
Okay.
I'm not touching your laptop, dude.
Okay, so, just to keep in mind, I think whenever the decisions to, for the depot, where the location would be for the depot, this council had actually changed it. When I come into office, it was out at the Switch Yard, out off of Newburgh Road. And, you know, I always felt that we needed to increase foot traffic downtown, make it more viability for the business owners, more business. And this council agreed with that. Where downtown, historically, we had decided we were going to put it right across from City Hall at the parking lot, which would be a little bit further away from State Street. But after Brent Anderson had come with, and it was a great idea, he had decided that why wouldn't it be better if foreign associates, associates who we hired, were going to focus on State Street? And some of the other changes that may have to take place on State Street in order to make it, you know, a better location, Brent had, and we didn't even pay Brent, I mean, we do pay Brent, but we didn't pay, we didn't pay him as part of the, as part of the associates. But he had suggested placing it on the corner, right, right on the corner of State Street and Pleasant. And I think that was a great idea. I think you're going to have individuals, and actually, foreign associates agreed with that. They said that, you know, that they thought that was a good idea with people getting off the train, and some of the improvements that needed to be made on State Street, that perhaps that would be a good enticement for them to want to travel or move from the depot to see what we had in the community. So that, I think, is the biggest change regarding where we had originally put this. I know Mayor Burrington had, had actually paid for a study and have a blueprint done on that, which was across, at the parking lot. And I think maybe this might be an improvement, but it doesn't matter what I think, it matters what the council thinks. But I, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. It does deviate from what we had decided probably before. And it's a presentation tonight, it's not anything other than that, so. Continue on, Gina.
This is just more views of what you'd see coming off the train. He did stress that you want to see buildings, you want to see activity, parking lots, vacancy, not ideal. So this was one area that he just kind of highlighted to show what kind of improvements that the train could bring. There was discussion, you know, what comes first, the redevelopment or the train? I think it's hard to encourage people to invest that kind of money for redevelopment if you can't guarantee them the train. So I think you would have to have the guarantee of the train at least, before you start seeing redevelopment. But one was, obviously, we have the telephone building downtown. It's a building that everyone recognizes. They may not know what's in there, but they know that building. And then you have the vacant lot next to it. That would be the kind of property that would be key for infill development. You have the vacant lot, you could turn it into a three-story mixed-use building. So you'd not only get the residents to ride the train, but you get that commercial on the first floor. The parking lot for the museum, once that ATM leaves, because that kind of really ties their hands on that parking lot, you could see that redeveloped, maybe adding that courtyard feel, maybe adding outside exhibits, restriping it to maximize the parking while being able to add stuff. And then there was discussion on the sign, and how it doesn't really tell you the museums there, the focus of the sign isn't the fact that it says museum. So, so that's another picture for the potential infill. There's quite a few small parking lots downtown, and they're not really used as public parking. So I know everyone's concerned about the parking ratio, but these lots aren't being used for parking now, they're just dead space. So that's what we would want to focus on for redevelopment. He suggested ideas to dress up the building, murals, something. Again, how to maximize on signage for the downtown. He brought up a couple of these. I know this caused quite the discussion at that presentation, so I'm just going to quickly address it. Our sign code encourages the use of graphics and icons. Most people don't do it, because it's cost. It's cheaper to do the flat metal sign, especially when you've just spent money redeveloping the building, or, you know, doing your tenant build-out. Unfortunately, they don't think marketing and their cost. But our sign code actually does encourage this kind of signage. So that, just to clarify that, we would have to add crosswalks, obviously, if we're walking to the train station, so there'd be some street improvements for that. Also encouraging that pedestrian friendliness in the downtown area in general. We'll need wayfinding signage. A lot of the more, the larger downtowns will have stuff like this. Tells you where to go for the splash pad, where to go for the YMCA, where to go for the Apollo, the museum, all of your main attractions downtown. If we're having people coming in on the train, and just our, you know, we have new residents every day that move in, it would be good to have some wayfinding signage downtown. it would be good to have some wayfinding signage downtown so that they know where all the main attractions are. Because we do have quite a few things downtown that, you know, interest people. So those are just different kinds. That was actually, this is a picture. It's the map of the entire town that kids can like play with. So it's kind of a cool urban art piece that also lays out the town. So this is the kind of stuff that could go in that, the museum parking lot, almost like an exhibit, interactive for kids. This was another thing that came up. Again, it was, I guess people don't think that that is allowed for signage. That is the reason why, because he was saying you want signs that grab your attention. You want signs that without having to read the whole sign, you know the kind of businesses advertising. We know that's coffee. We know that's ice cream. One of the reasons why we don't have this signage downtown is that most of our buildings are built lot line to lot line. So where would be the private property to put that sign? Because your building goes all the way to the lot line. That is why you're not seeing those kinds of signs downtown, because there's only a handful of properties that aren't built all the way to the lot line. And obviously, we won't allow that on the sidewalk because it's an obstruction. So there's just not too many properties that even have the space for that. That's just another, if you don't want to do wayfinding signage, you can do a kiosk. But we're, are looking at including that inside the train station. The other big component was that leaf property, the waterfront development. It's in the floodway. It's in the floodplain. We are aware that obviously flooding issues is a concerning topic in the community. Although that property, I don't think has ever really flooded, it's still development in the floodplain. Just because it's in the floodplain doesn't mean you can't develop it to actually improve flooding. You know, you can do detention, mitigation. So this was just a couple of ideas on how to do that. One is dilted buildings. One is park, you know, if a playground's underwater, that's fine. If, you know, a football field's underwater, that's fine. So this just kind of went with some ideas. How other towns did it that actually improved their floodplain areas where, and then if it did flood, it didn't negatively impact the area. I will say this stuff is expensive. And the consultant did not really have ideas on the funding and how to make that work. And I will also admit, I am a purist when it comes to the river. Mother Nature designed the river to have that riverbank and that layout. So to do things that alter that, you're fighting like this, you're kind of fighting against Mother Nature. So what would the complications be down the line? I don't, that's me. I'll admit, that's my own personal opinion. Very cool, but again, very costly. But maybe with the train, it would prompt someone to want to invest that level on the community. So again, just examples. And that was about it. But basically, we just really fought to, you know, like the mayor said, really fought to have it along State Street so it would have the biggest impact to the downtown.
Okay. Any questions for Gina? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Gina, I've watched the R1 virtual public meeting on YouTube.
Mm-hmm.
And this is basically a carbon copy. The thing I did learn was that this is going to be a one start and stop per day thing. So how are we going to increase ridership if people are not using it for commuting?
Yes, so I think the opportunity of it going from excursion to commuter, one depends if it's going to be Metro or Amtrak. Obviously, one is designed more for commuter versus excursion. The other is it looks at the, the train line in general. So it would be our ridership plus Rockford's. And then maybe I would imagine they would, once it gets going, that they would have another ridership study happen now that you see the train, now that you know how long it actually does take to get back and forth. Would you use this for commuting purposes now that you know what it is and reassess from there?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I, I ride the train a lot into Chicago and into the suburbs. I like to shop in Chicago. But I always go to Ogilvy from Harvard. So does it matter if it's Amtrak or Metro if you end up at Ogilvy?
It does not. I can't remember what station. Is it the Ogilvy Station this is stopping at or is it? Downtown? Union?
Canal Street, End of Line is my understanding.
Yeah, I can't remember what exactly, I, I know it's not the Cell Street, which is the station I'm used to.
Which is, for instance, if you get on Big Timber, at Big Timber, and you would follow it to the End of Line, it would be Chicago down at the river.
But it does not matter on this Amtrak versus Metro. It'll both have the same ending spot.
Thank you.
And also, just before we get off in the weeds too far regarding this, keep in mind that, you know, there's a lot of things that are undetermined. I don't believe they have released any of the results of the ridership study. Those are one of the things, obviously, they need to know. They have not released who the carrier is going to be, whether it be Amtrak or Metro. So really, there's a lot of things that I think we would have wanted to know by now. And, but also, I had said this, you know, I'm kind of a realist when it comes to this stuff. It seems like every now and then this appears, and usually it's around election time. And usually it means that, you know, we've had this happen before, actually. And they'd given the city of Belvidere $300,000 for a depot. And then that kind of went south. And the good part about it was we didn't, I guess we didn't get any passenger rail, but we did get to keep the $300,000. We have not had any money, even though IDOT, I think, has funded $275 million towards this project. But keep in mind, there's a lot of intangibles that are out there that they have not been able to answer yet either. And I guess the fact that they funded it and the fact that Rockford now is, you know, they had redesigned, reconstructed their South Main Street corridor. And I believe that was their plan some 10 years ago when they did that, that they were going to put a train depot there on that end of town. And with them being the end of the line now under this proposal, that potentially may put us in a better position. But from what I'm told, it ultimately depends on ridership. They don't want to fund a train that doesn't get used. And as Alderwoman Freeman had pointed out, you know, it's a stop, it's a one in the morning and one back in the evening. And how many individuals are you going to get to do that? So the ridership study is, I think, the key. So we'll just keep that in mind because, believe me, I don't anticipate a check or anything that we're going to be able to start a depot or any of that stuff. I think, you know, a lot of this, a lot of this just may be political posturing. How's that? Alderman Porter?
I just want a real quick comment here. I think that this might have a little bit more viability now that the Hard Rock Cafe Casino seems to be a sure thing at this point. And I think a lot of people would ride out from Chicago just to go to the casino. So that might be a big plus for this.
It could be, yeah. It could be. They, they would pass through Elgin, but they got a casino in Elgin, right? So, yeah, it could be. But I wouldn't, I'm not going to hold my breath on it, put it that way. So any other questions for Gina regarding the passenger rail presentation that we had had? All right. Thank you. Hearing none. We'll move on to three public works unfinished business. We have none. Public Works, new business, Public Works update, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our branch pickup is continuing for the balance of this month. Our overlay project should be completed. Originally, the thought was they're going to be completed last Friday. And that's been pushed back to this Friday. They should be finished with that. Otherwise, if there's any questions, I can answer.
Any questions for Brent? Okay. And moving on, Brent, item B, 4B, replacement of the water department 2005 Ford F-250 pickup truck.
Memo in your packet. The water department equipment replacement schedule includes a replacement of our 2005 Ford F-250 pickup truck in fiscal year 2024, which is next year. Unfortunately, the box is rusted, is rusted bad and it's about ready to fall off. We can certainly try to mend it up to last the next six months. Belvider Motors has received a 2015 Ford F-350 Super Duty pickup truck with the utility box and a Tommy lift. It is a one-owner truck with 118,866 miles. It can be purchased for $26,800. A new comparable truck will be in the $50,000 to $60,000 range. The budget amount that we had in for, included in next year's budget is $40,000. We had $120,000 in the budget this year for capital expenses for equipment for a mini excavator and a trailer, of which we spent $95,506 on those units, leaving an unexpendable balance of $24,494. And also, in another couple of sections down tonight, we're going to talk about the camera replacement as well. There was $17,000 included in our capital budget for that. The price tag on that new camera came back at $7,442 if council approves that. So that leaves a little over $9,000 remainder on that part as well. So there's money left in the allotment of funds for capital funds for equipment purchase this year to go ahead and purchase the F-250. There's pictures of the existing unit as well as the new, the new used unit. I would recommend approval of the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-350 pickup truck from Belvider Motors at a cost of $26,800. And the vehicle will be paid for from the Water Depreciation Fund 0409.
Okay. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Fleury, second by Alderwoman Mohow. Questions? Alderman Porter?
Well, the only thing that I would question is the 118,000 miles. That's fairly high mileage, isn't it, for a truck?
You know, not anymore. It seems to be, it depends on how that one was driven. It's a pretty clean unit. We've had our mechanics go out and check it out. And it's coming back, the report, it's in, it's in good shape. So the fact that it's got the utility body on it already, it's got the Tommy lift on it already, it's an F-350. It's basically, for the current price and what they're asking for versus what the value is on trucks these days, I think it's going to be a pretty good deal for us.
Alderwoman Frank?
Hi, Brent. It looked like it was in pretty good shape, the body. Are you going to paint it to match all the rust or are you going to just leave it white?
It'll be white.
Okay. Alderman Snow?
So with the old vehicle, will the Tommy lift come off and be used on something else or that just go with the vehicle?
The Tommy lift there is just pretty well used up as well. If we can salvage it, we may. I'll come back. I didn't put it in the memo tonight, but eventually we'll need a memo to dispose of the, the old truck.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Brent, I have to echo Alderman Porter. Is this really the truck you want? It's seven years old with 118,000 miles on it? Do you want to hold out for something a little bit newer?
I think at, at this day, for, for this equipment, for this truck, specifically what we use it for, how we use it, I think this one's a, is apt replacement for it.
And Brent, you have been looking because as the pictures depict regarding the truck that you're replacing, we can see that there isn't a lot left of it. And so I think the Tommy lift even looks like that may, that may not hold much. But the bed of the pickup truck that we're replacing has seen its better day. And I don't know, you know, I guess it's not what you want, but Brent, I'm not going to use your word that you always use, cheap.
Frugal.
That's better. That's what I was going to use, frugal. So I think it is an efficient way to meet the need of a truck that needs, is bearing replacement. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. We have a motion in a second to recommend the purchase of the 2015 Ford 350 pickup truck from Belvider Motors at the cost of $26,800. This vehicle will be paid for from the Water Depreciation Fund number 04-09, which has a current balance of approximately $952,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And Brent, item C is yours?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, memo in your packet. Our return activated sludge, that's what the RAS stands for, pumps at the wastewater treatment plant are continuously move the sludge throughout the plant processes. We have three of them. Currently, RAS pump number two is down. And we've seen the following proposals to repair and/or replace the pump. Illinois Pump Incorporated is the licensed authorized dealer for the WEMCOs, which is what our current pump is. To rebuild that pump is $29,786. And we have rebuilt these pumps several times actually over their life. To replace it with a new pump is $53,218. LAI Limited, $48,000 for a new pump. That is a slightly smaller pump. When we looked at this, there's redundancy built into the system at the wastewater treatment plant for obvious reasons. And they are also designed to handle worst-case scenarios. On an everyday flow basis, the majority of the time, one pump running continuously does more than, is more than adequate to handle the job. So this, the LAI pump is actually a little bit smaller pump. It's more, would be more efficient to operate. And for that reason, I would recommend that we approve the proposal from LAI Limited in the amount of $48,000 for the replacement of RAS pump number two. And this work will be paid for from the Plant Depreciation Fund.
Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions? Any follow-up with Brent? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And item D, sewer service camera replacement. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in the packets. Our current sewer service camera is 15 years old and no longer able to record video. Our current budget includes $17,000 for replacement of this camera. And we've received three proposals for the new sewer service camera. I would recommend approval of the proposal from RNOW Incorporated to purchase an Insight Vision Sewer Inspection Camera to replace our existing unit in the amount of $7,442. This work will be paid for from the Sewer Depreciation Account. I know the, the cost on those three cameras and the proposals is a wide variety. Basically, the, the RNOW unit is a basic unit that is compatible with our current equipment that we have. The other two have some additional bells and whistles that we don't necessarily need. The 7,442 model, the RNOW model, suits our needs, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Mohow. Any questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So Brent, didn't we just, didn't we just vote on and pass a new camera for you, for the sewer system?
No, the camera, that was done a few years ago. That was for our mainline camera that we do with the sewer lines. This is specifically for sewer services. When the, when the ordinance was changed to require the city to be, to maintain service laterals from the property line out to the street, it's, it's a necessity now for us to have this type of camera. It's a smaller camera. It's basically a push camera that you can put from the property line basically to televise that portion of the sewer. The mainline camera, they have options that you can buy add-ons that would actually turn and go up, but those are much more expensive. So this is the one that best suits our needs for doing service laterals.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Fleury?
Thank you. So this one has 200 feet of cable. What did the old one have?
It's about 200 feet. I think it's about the same.
Thank you.
And that would be a rare occasion that we'd have to go that far with it because service laterals are just within the right of ways, basically.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right. Do we have a hearing none? We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the proposal from RNOW Inc. to purchase an Insight Vision Sewer Inspection Camera to replace our existing unit in the amount of $7,442. This work will be paid for from the Sewer Depreciation Account. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Item five, other, we have a
Item five, other, we have a, item A, a block party request for 1451 Pondview Drive. That's out in Farmington. Is that right? I believe. Correct?
Farmington East.
Farmington East. The information that you have in front of you is for October 22nd, 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. They have a chili cook-off and they wanted to block off Sixth Street and Pondview and Pondview and Kennedy Drive. So if I could get a motion in a second on the floor, at least for discussion's sake, if we could do that? Motion by Alderman Frank, second. Second by Alderman Snow. Any questions, concerns regarding? Alderman Snow?
I guess my concern would be the 11 o'clock. Typically, our block party usually end at nine, I thought, typically. And I would move to change it to nine o'clock to be consistent and make sure there's no other issues or problems.
Okay. We have a motion in a second then to amend the time from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Although, any other, any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any party opposed?
None.
Okay. The ayes have it. All right. So we have the motion as amended, then to change that from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. Any other questions, concerns? Okay. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. We have Belvedere Police Department regarding generous donation from Gordon and Linda Neese. Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. If you would turn to the memo in your packets, Belvedere Police Department is requesting to accept a donation from Gordon and Linda Neese in the amount of $1,500. The Neese family has been donating to the Belvedere Police Department for years, which has allowed the police department to purchase needed equipment and supplies. If approved, I would request to use this donation for the purchase of a new Apple iPad Air computer and accessories. The current mobile laptop computer I'm using is approximately eight years old and according to IT, no longer compatible with the operating system necessary to provide it with virus protection and updates. I would use this mobile computer for accessing my desktop at work for meetings away from the office or fielding questions or concerns from the public, Alderman, or the media while away from the office or at home. Motion one, I would request to accept the $1,500 check as listed on the memo donated from Gordon and Linda Neese to the Belvedere Police Department.
Okay. Motion by Alderwoman Mohal, second by Alderman Fleury. Any discussion regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. And chief, make sure you thank Gordon and Linda Neese on behalf of the council and the City of Belvedere. Greatly appreciate that. That's awful kind of them, very generous. Thank you.
I will. Thank you, Mayor. And then if I may, motion number two, request approval using the $1,500 Gordon and Linda Neese donation to purchase an Apple iPad Air keyboard and stylus in the amount of $1,277.54.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Fleury. Any questions regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. All right. And under item C, we have the Safety Act Resolution that was in your packets. And I know there has been some discussion that has resulted with the recent Safety Act. It has been passed in the state of Illinois. I know 100 roughly, I believe it's 100 out of the 102 counties in the state of Illinois has had their state's attorney have filed suit in regards to that. I have chatted with Chief Woody regarding the impact and the concern regarding that. I know the Boone County Board has had a resolution. I believe the Winnebago County Board has also passed a resolution and many other communities. I, you know, I guess this is open, obviously. It's on the agenda tonight. It's open for comment, any discussion and what have you. We'll start out. Alderman Snow?
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Burden, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Burden. Discussion. Alderman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So when it comes to this item on the agenda, I'd first like to say I'd be willing to bet the farm that a minimum of eight out of 10 elected aldermen here have not taken the time to actually read and understand HB 3653 or done any independent research whatsoever. Well, I have, and I'm willing to educate everybody here as well as the public to its actual content, as well as some common myths and politically charged misinformation. The implementation of HB 3653, otherwise known as the Safety Act, among other things, means money will no longer be a factor in pre-trial release decisions pertaining to defendants accused of committing crimes in Illinois. The elimination of cash bail was one of the major reforms in a criminal justice omnibus bill signed into law by Governor Pritzker in February 2021, and it will take effect on January 1st, 2023. This change in policy and practice represents a historic and fundamental shift in the pre-trial release system in Illinois. Instead of setting a dollar amount, judges will make determinations about whether to release someone charged with a crime, bold letters, based on the level of risk the person poses to the community or the risk of not appearing in court. An important takeaway comes from a report by Loyola University Chicago researchers that examined public safety outcomes before and after Cook County instituted pre-trial reforms in the fall of 2017. The reforms were aimed at reducing pre-trial, pre-trial detention in Cook County Jail due to bond amounts that defendants were unable to pay. Through General Order 18.8A, the Cook County Chief Judge directed bond court judges to maintain a presumption against requiring monetary bail in their release decisions and to order the least restrictive conditions necessary to reasonably assure the appearance of the defendant in future court proceedings. The chief judge began publishing pre-trial data following this policy change. The study found that even though reforms led to an increase in the number of people released from bond court, they did not lead to any changes in Chicago crime rates. Research shows releasing more people pre-trial as a result of bond reform had zero effect on new criminal activity committed by those released defendants. Only 3% had new criminal charges filed both before and after the implementation. The report also noted that bail reforms in New York City, New Jersey, and Philadelphia that led to more people being released from jail pre-trial also did not lead to an increase in crime. Pre-trial release assessments based on risk are already used in Cook County and many other counties in Illinois and across the United States. The removal of money as a factor in pre-trial release decisions is supported by research, best practices, and national principles on bail. Here's what the bill actually does. Modernizes the sentencing laws, replaces the cash bail system with a new system that detains all dangerous defendants regardless of their ability to pay, institutes certification and decertification systems statewide for police officers, requires the use of body cameras, reforms crowd control response, amplifies law enforcement training standards, prevents destruction of law enforcement misconduct records, connects substance abuse treatment programs with first responder duties, increases and improves de-escalation and mental health training for law enforcement, creates two police misconduct databases for public viewing and transparency, requires police to develop a plan to protect children during search warrant raids, empowers the Attorney General to investigate deaths occurring in police custody, addresses officer wellness and mental health awareness and screenings, bans the use of chokeholds and other extreme measures, and establishes statewide use of force standards. What it does not do, it does not defund the police, does not modify or remove qualified immunity protections for police departments, does not change or take away collective bargaining rights, it does not allow those that are charged with a serious offense and are a risk to a person or the community or is a flight risk to be released. It does not prevent a judge from revoking pre-trial release. It does not alter prison time for individuals serving time for heinous crimes. It does give prisoner and citizens rights. Several measures in HB 3653 are aimed at reforming detainee and prisoner rights and to ensure Illinois criminal justice system is fair for everyone. Among other things, the bill increases services and programming for pregnant prisoners and requires medical treatment of prisoners and detainees without reasonable, unreasonable delay. It adds new detainee rights when in police custody, including the right to make free phone calls, three free phone calls within three hours of arrival at the police station. The ability to retrieve phone numbers contained in their cell phone's contact list prior to their phone being placed in inventory. Requires that an easily seen public notice of these rights be posted in police stations and booking rooms. Requires that the telephone number to the public defender or appointed attorney's office must also be displayed. In the event a person who is in police custody is transferred to a new place of custody, they have the right to again make a phone call. It prohibits people with less than four months on their sentence from being imprisoned and allows them to be diverted to electronic monitoring or another DOC facility or program. It ends prison gerrymandering, the practice under current law of counting prisoners toward a jurisdiction census count rather than their last known address. It makes changes to streamline the crime victim's compensation progress, process. It promotes the use of co-responder models and enhances data collection on mental health crisis response. Codifies that the use of force by police as a punishment or retaliation is prohibited. Creates new requirements in the event police execute no-knock warrants, including that one, each participating member is assigned a body-worn camera and is following policies and procedures. Two, steps are taken in planning the search to ensure accuracy and plan for children or other vulnerable people on site. And three, if an officer becomes aware the search warrant was executed at an address, unit, or apartment different from the location listed on the search warrant, that member will immediately notify a supervisor who will ensure an internal investigation ensues. What it does for court reforms, HB 3653 also makes a number of changes that specifically affect how people interact with the courts in ways that aim to interrupt the cycle of recidivism and incarceration in which many Illinois families find themselves. Among these reforms, HB 3653 replaces the cash bail system with a new system that detains all dangerous defendants regardless of their ability to pay. It ends the practice of suspending driver's license for failure to pay. It aligns the eligibility for the mental health court or veterans and service members court with the other specialty courts. It modernizes earned sentence credits and shortens mandatory supervised release times for certain offenses, clarifies that the felony murder rule applies to deaths that happen at the hands of participants at the crime, modernizes the three-strikes rule to comply with recent Supreme Court hearings on age, and removes nonviolent offenses from counting as the three strikes. It allows the court to deviate from mandatory minimums and implement alternative sentencing for certain offenses. Now let's combat misinformation. Combating Safety Act misinformation. What does the Safety Act really do? Bases detention on risk factors and potential to flee rather than the ability to pay. Ensures that judges retain the ability to hold individuals who are safety risks. Focuses on the needs of crime victims. Brings our state closer to a system of true safety, fairness, and justice. How will pre-trial practice change after January 1st? Current practice, a person charged with murder, rape, sex offenses, or gun crimes can use cash to pay for release and be back on the streets. A person charged with a minor offense who cannot afford to use cash to pay for release sits in jail awaiting trial. After Safety Act, a person charged with murder, rape, sex offenses, or gun crimes cannot buy their release no matter how much money they have. A person charged with a minor offense will be released if they do not pose a risk to others, whether or not they have access to money. Myth. Myth one, in Illinois, police will be banned from removing trespassers from your home as of January 1st. This is all over social media. Fact, this is false. There is nothing banning police from removing trespassers from your home. The police maintain the discretion to arrest anyone who poses an obvious threat to the community, any person, or their own safety. Myth two, when Illinois eliminates cash bail on January 1st, murderers, kidnappers, and rapists will not be arrested but instead just issued a notice to appear in court. False. There is nothing in the Safety Act preventing arrests for these crimes. The law allows for these individuals to be detained pending trial. Myth, people currently incarcerated will be released when portions of the Safety Act related to cash bail are effective. Fact, after January 1st, judges will still have the ability to detain people, including those charged with murder or sex offenses. Now that we've debunked the politicized arguments against this bill, let's give an example. John Jones and Bill Smith are both accused of, arrested, and charged with attempted rape. Both are given the same bond of $50,000 by the same judge in the same county. At 10%, each must post $5,000 to be released from custody. John either has the money or calls his daddy, who can afford to bond him out. Bill, on the other hand, has no money or relatives who do. John is released and free to go to work, pay his bills, spend time with his family, and secure an attorney. Meanwhile, Bill sits in jail, loses his job, therefore cannot pay his bills, loses his home, as well as the ability to pay an attorney and gets stuck with a public defender. Both attorneys continue the case for months in the court system. One defendant sits in jail awaiting trial while the other awaits in the comfort of his home on the sole basis of money or lack of. Surely, Chief Woody nor anyone in this room would argue that John is somehow less of a criminal- a criminal, less likely to commit another crime, or less guilty of the charges than Bill, simply because John had bond money and Bill did not, right? We can also factor in the whole innocent until proven guilty reasoning. A presumption of innocence means that any defendant in a criminal trial is assumed to be innocent until they have been proven guilty. As such, a prosecutor is required to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that the person committed the crime if that person is to be convicted. To do so, proof must be shown for every single element of a crime. That being said, a presumption of innocence does not guarantee that a person will remain free until their trial has concluded. In some circumstances, a person can be held in custody. And as already discussed, that remains intact with the Safety Act. The presumption of innocence is not guaranteed in the U.S. Constitution. However, through statutes and court decisions such as the U.S. Supreme Court case of Taylor v. Kentucky, it has been recognized as one of the most basic requirements of a fair trial. Therefore, making sure that prosecutors have ample evidence to prove a crime at the time of charging it while seeking incarceration is not unreasonable and should not be considered a high burden by the state. I have read the bill. Oh, let's not forget that in the above scenario of John and Bill, Bill is costing the taxpayers of his county about $100 per day. No cash bail not only eliminates allowing criminals to buy their way out of jail, but saves taxpayers' money, something I always thought conservatives were in favor of. I have read the bill. I have done the research and used credible sources. I have done my due diligence in trying to find a reason to support this resolution and have not found a single non-debunked one. I am too intelligent to buy into political fear-mongering and unproven conspiracy theories. The resolution before us tonight contains misinformation and debunked theories and should not be supported by this council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Porter?
Well, a couple of things here. I just want to say that I think a lot of the programs that are in this bill are good programs, but they can be done individually, not with letting people who are accused of aggravated battery, robbery, burglary, hate crimes, you know, let them go, even temporarily. I don't think that's a good idea, but the 3% repeat criminals, that worries me because when you're talking about a city like Chicago with such a high crime rate, 3% is a lot of people. And also, I don't think that people like myself and my family that have been victims of violent crimes would agree with that because any victim, even one victim of a repeat offender is too much, you know, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, the point was, these people are already getting out. It's just that they have money to do so and some don't. So, they're already getting out with bond if they have money. It's only the people with no money that are not getting out. So, if you have money, you can buy your way out of any crime. You can bond yourself out of hundreds of thousands of dollars. It don't matter if you got the cash. If you don't have the cash, you're going to sit in jail. The 3% I think was misunderstood as that percent did not change once they implemented this new pretrial. It was 3% before and it stayed at 3% after. So, that didn't, that had, the pretrial, no bond, did not have an effect on that number.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Burden?
Thanks, Mayor. So, yeah, I just want to thank the mayor and city attorney for putting this resolution together. I believe this was originally proposed by County Board Member Riley to the County Board, this resolution, and it passed unanimously. All 12 board members voted on this regardless of party affiliation. And just from what I hear from the community, anybody in the legal system isn't a real fan of this, so I'll vote aye on this resolution and I appreciate the work. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Porter?
Oh, just one other quick comment. If that's true, that 100 out of 102 counties prosecutors agree that this should be repealed. You know, I'm sure they did their research and they understand the ramifications of this act and also, they're also saying that there's, part of the act is there's not enough time for the judges to actually make these decisions of whether to release these people or not.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Any other concerns? Any other questions? I will say this, I don't think that when you read this resolution, and I will read it, I'll tell you what, I'll read it now. So, this, here's what this resolution says. "Resolution urging the repeal or amendment of the Safety Act. Whereas the City of Belvidere has an obligation to provide for the safety and welfare of its citizens, and whereas the Safety Act passed in the predawn hours of a lame duck session of the Illinois General Assembly will result in more than half of the current detainees in the Boone County Jail being released back into the community. And whereas the Safety Act eliminates cash bail and strips the judiciary of their ability to balance the rights of the accused to be free on bail against the rights of the public to receive reasonable protective consideration by the courts. And whereas the Safety Act makes entire categories of serious crimes including, but not limited to, aggravated battery, robbery, burglary, hate crimes, aggravated DUIs, reckless homicide, armed habitual criminal, drug-induced homicide, and all drug offenses including delivery and trafficking of fentanyl ineligible for pretrial detention. Despite the severity of the crime, unless the people prove by clear and convincing evidence that the defendant has a high likelihood of flight to avoid prosecution, or they are a specific immediate threat to an individual or community, a very high burden to prove. And whereas the Safety Act creates an unreasonable higher legal standard for pretrial detention enforceable felonies such as murder and armed robbery. And whereas the City Council of the City of Belvidere believes that this law puts the public in danger by prohibiting detention of dangerous criminals and will discourage victims from cooperating with law enforcement due to fear of retaliation by offenders immediately released back into society." So, that's what this resolution says and what we or what is in front of you this evening. You know, I think if we look at some of the communities that have tried this, Chicago, Philly, New York, some of these, Cook County, I don't think there's any question that you have more victims. I don't, I think this, and I kind of find it ironic, it's a Safety Act, but yet it seems like we have more and more innocent victims and we create more victims. So, it's up to the council. It's a resolution that our state's attorney had also filed a suit, but also had drafted something similar with the Boone County Board. And, you know, I guess I look at it that the individuals that are on the day-to-day battle with crime in this community, and I'm talking about the police department, I'm talking about the state's attorney's office who prosecute these crimes, I don't believe that, you know, they feel, when you read what they have to say about it, they feel that this is a benefit for the law-abiding citizen. However you shake it out, I think you have more victims and I think that's one thing we don't need. As I'd said, some of the communities that are quoted with this, Chicago being one, I'll tell you what, I'm concerned, I would be concerned about going there, and I'm concerned about what this would do to any of the communities that have passed this, that don't pass this resolution. I think it's your right, the citizens' right, rights to, you know, speak out if they feel that law-abiding citizens are being taken advantage of or not represented. So, that's up to this council. I know how law enforcement feels. I would give law enforcement a chance to comment on this if they so choose, if they would like to. So, I will actually, Alderwoman Mohal had her hand up first. Alderwoman?
I'd like to call the question. I'm with, maybe after, Chief Woody.
Okay. Chief, did you have anything?
I'm sorry, that's just silencing people that still have something left to say.
Chief, did you have anything that you, excuse me, Love, point of order? Chief, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Sure, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, law enforcement in general, we aren't, we don't just have the luxury of reading the act. We have to, we're challenged with complying with the requirements of the act and I've sat in meetings with the chief judge of the circuit as well as the head judge for our community, state's attorney, defense attorney, public defenders, probation, and trying to make heads and tails of how to comply with what's written in the act. And I think there is a lot of confusion and maybe even some political propaganda on both sides. But the reality of it is, you can't tell me that Cook County, New York, California, Minnesota, who all employ this type of pretrial Fairness Act model, have less crime because of it. You just look at what is occurring within those communities and it is concerning as not only a law enforcement professional, but as a citizen in the great state of Illinois, what potentially this could cause. Now, I know a lot of professionals that I spoke to are hopeful that at some point they'll realize just what a terrible mistake they made with no cash bail and they will make some amendments to it, but we're all realistic that that's not going to happen probably in time before some of this to take effect for several months. And the real question is how much damage is done in the meantime? And then there's others that say cash bail's never coming back. And you can't tell me as a law enforcement professional and as a citizen that having more criminals out on the street will make our communities more safe. That justifies common sense. You know, this is something that I struggle with greatly. I never in a million years thought I would be sitting here discussing this in our state. It's truly, truly unfortunate. And, you know, statistics, you can make statistics say whatever you want. It depends on what you're trying to convey to the public. So, you know, take that with a grain of salt. As far as, you know, your example of the attempted rapist, Bill and John, you know, where John was able to bond and Bill wasn't, and that's unfair. So, the alternative is that you let both rapists out? How can we?
Chief has the floor. Continue.
So, I have a family, you know, I have a wife, I have children, I have, you know, mother, and it concerns me greatly to think that we're going to have more criminals that are responsible for committing violent crimes that really judges' hands are tied. They're literally tied and have no choice but to let these people back out on the streets that our families walk on. You know, and in terms of Bill and John, you know, what's fair is that neither one of them is able to bond. Keep them both in jail. You know, if you can't pay, don't do the crime. I'm sorry. And the reality of it is, the restrictions that is required for some of these violators to be detained, you know, the requirement that the state's attorney has to prove at their first hearing in order to get somebody detained, they have to prove, the proof has to be evident or presumption great that the accused person has committed a qualifying offense. Now, in the resolution, the resolution gives you an idea of what those qualifying offenses are. But according to our state's attorney, her interpretation of what that means is that, you know, beyond a reasonable doubt from a jury standpoint, you're looking at about 95, 98% sure that somebody committed a particular crime. What they're going to have to prove, probably the first hearing or first meeting before the judge after somebody's arrested, is that they're probably about 75% sure, and the evidence that they have supports that, that this person committed that crime. Now, understand why that is so unreasonable. A lot of crimes are committed and that's what the purpose of an investigation is. You know, so what that means to law enforcement is, before we ever make an arrest on somebody who commits murder, we have to have enough evidence to show that they're 75% guilty, that they committed that crime. Now, you know, I don't know about you, I don't want somebody that, you know, potentially, probably, possibly committed murder out simply because we have to conduct that much more investigation. I mean, you know, there's levels of proof that we have to have at this point in order to make an arrest. And, you know, it's been that way for decades. And currently with the bail bond system, judges have the discretion based off the offense, based off the violator's criminal history, based off of whether or not they've come to court before, to assess and assign an appropriate bond. You know, but now you say because unfortunately there are some that can't afford that, that everybody goes free? That to me just doesn't make sense. And I'm sorry, if this truly was something good for our state, they wouldn't have had to rush it through at 5:00 in the morning when nobody else was there to be opposition to it. Are there some good things in the Safety Act? Sure. Are there some things that needed to be addressed and needed to make sure that law enforcement was transparent and held accountable? Absolutely. So, there are definitely some good things that did come of it. I'm not saying that I'm against the Safety Act in its entirety, but in terms of this pretrial fairness, you have to look at it and apply common sense at its very core. And when you do that, I struggle to understand how anybody could say that this is going to be good for our community, let alone our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, any other comments? We have a motion, we have a motion to call the question first. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second then to call the question. Those in favor, will, when the clerk calls a roll, vote aye. Any opposed will vote nay. Help me out, clerk.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman? Freeman Love McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Clarification. We're voting to call the vote?
We're voting, yes, we're voting to call the question of the vote, yes.
Nay.
Brather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Ateen, favor?
Okay, that passes, so we have the resolution that is before you this evening for approval. We have a motion on the floor for that. Is there, all those in favor actually, will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. All right, I believe that's all we have on our agenda this evening. So, unless you want to stay a while, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Prather. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who wants to stay? Okay. For the record, we adjourned at 7:49 PM. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time.